Alright, how's everybody doing today?
Great.
Great, thank you. That's better than me. So we're uh working through some technical difficulties. Uh shows great leadership the first time, uh but sometimes you have to work around uh unexpected uh things. So you'll probably note this, this is not the chair's office behind me. Uh so there's some pile driving going on right outside my window. So uh we had to make some last minute um room, you know, changes here uh to make this all work. Uh so I'll share some pictures of that pile driving here in a little bit. Um so you bear with me one second. Um Dusty, I think you gotta turn on the uh share for me. Alright, great. And voila. That looks like it's working. Excellent. Alright, well, welcome everybody uh to the town hall uh for for the fall of two thousand twenty four. Um so for those who don't know me, I'm Brian Flegger. I'm the current R. Byron Bird uh department chair. Uh and so um what I wanna do today is uh go through the following. Screen doesn't freeze here. Uh is basically give you a little update, what's uh happening around here uh here in Madison. Um and so I've got a few vignettes on different things that that are pretty exciting news and uh some some progress uh in some things you've heard about in the past. And then we're gonna uh move to a faculty spotlight uh with the new assistant professor, Mino. Uh so she's gonna give a short introduction to her career and uh the research that she's planning to do here now that she's in Madison. Um and so as you go through either of these two first pieces, uh Mike Holland is uh sitting in the chat uh ready to collect your questions. Uh and so he'll help moderate a Q and A afterwards. Um so either uh you know, send them to Mike in the chat or uh be prepared to unmute yourself uh what Mike indicates uh after these first, you know, few talks. Alright, so a little bit of faculty news. Uh so uh we'll start with Whitney Lu. Uh if you remember, she's the Conway Assistant Professor who started in the department a few years ago. Uh her research area is mostly in materials and polymer synthesis. And she won a very prestigious Department of Energy Early Career Award. Uh and so this is a very competitive, you know, thousands of applicants, you know, very few awardees. Uh and so we're we're thrilled to see that she's gonna be uh working for the next five years on a project uh that looks at a new type of electrolyte uh for use in batteries. And so she's hoping to do that uh to make new safer, uh cheaper and energy efficient uh systems. Along similar lines, uh George Huber, uh who you probably know has been working in the area plastics recycling and trying to find ways to uh have a a greener, more sustainable uh chemical industry. Uh recently was uh named the Director of a New Center, and this is one that was funded uh by the Schmidt Sciences and the Foundation for Food and Agricultural Research. Uh this is acronym is very cute. It's called Seymour, just like CUP was the acronym for the Center for Upcycling Waste Plastics. This Seymour Center is now the Center for Mineral and Metal Oxide Removal from Biomass. And so the focus here is to be able to remove some of the things that are recalcitrant to heterogeneous catalysis uh when you're trying to upgrade biomass into other types of fuels or chemicals that you're interested in. A lot of the things that come along with those biomass, the inorganic materials uh can end up poisoning those catalysts. And so this is a a group that's gonna be trying to focus on removing a lot of those minerals uh from that material. And then lastly, uh Victor Zavala, who you know is one of our process systems engineer, the Baltimore de Pra uh professor. Um he uh not only does amazing research, uh he also works to try to bring this work to the general public. And so he partnered uh with some local uh folks here to develop a new uh video game to try to teach the ideas of resource um, you know, material balances and how uh those types of applications can be looked at within uh the agricultural and the environmental uh perspective. And so the title of his new video game that was developed with Field Day Learning Games, a local uh nonprofit here uh is called Bloom, The Saga of Fertilizer Economy. Uh somewhat known also as uh the fertilizer poop. And so this is based off of research that actually I'm I'm happy to collaborate with Victor on. Well, we're looking at ways to try to address dairy manure and the accumulation of inorganic materials, nitrogen and phosphorus primarily uh in wastewater discharge from farms that ends up in Lake Mendota and other uh waterways leading to algal blooms that are uh very unhealthy. And so here students get the opportunity to think about that concept and try to find uh mitigation strategies that would help uh keep the lakes uh safe and environmentally enjoyable. So there's a lot of uh going on in the department from the faculty perspective. These are just three short uh vignettes. Uh elsewhere in the department this fall, we held two wonderful uh opportunities to honor um our our alums. Uh and so uh in early October uh we had uh the, sorry, early November, we had the the Founder's Day uh lecture from Neil Oroskar. Uh so uh Neil and his wife are the founders and operators of Wurukem. Uh and so it's a company that develops uh a lot of different chemical technologies. Um I affectionately called his talk, which was fantastically received in the department. Um you know, Neil is is clearly the chem uh Forrest Gump of chemical engineers. He's been around and interacting with a ton of different prominent technology development uh, you know, things inside the chemical engineering space. And so it was a really wonderful uh history that he provided a lot of our students uh in in looking back at his career. And then more recently, uh we had Engineer's Day in mid-November. Uh and so we got to honor two alumni. Uh so Christine Erspammer uh won the uh Early Career Award this year. Uh Christine is an executive in Optum Serve, a uh health services company. And she's uh recognized for particularly for her interactions and helping uh veterans and soldiers uh with their uh their their um healthcare. Uh and then in addition, John Church, who I thought I saw uh on here, uh at least in the guest list uh was honored uh with the Distinguished Achievement Award. And so John's had a uh a long storied career with General Mills. Uh and so he gave us a fantastic um both Christine and 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 John gave a fantastic Q and A with the undergraduates at the scholarship reception uh earlier or later in that day. Uh and so they got some uh interesting questions and handled them with poise like professionals. Uh and so we're thrilled to have them on campus, uh very excited uh to honor them uh that day. Uh some other alumni news. Uh so this was kind of fun. We got a call over the summer uh that the class of seventy-four wanted to get together. Uh and so they organized by John Eckert, uh one of the alums of that class. Uh a group of them came to campus uh for a fall football weekend. And so they arrived on Friday afternoon uh and they uh met with the department uh and came and toured some of the new uh res- uh research and and instructional facilities. Uh got to hear a progress update from me about what's going on in Madison. Uh and then got to spend a fantastic weekend at the football game and doing all sorts of other fun things. And then collectively through that, they were encouraged uh, you know, by what they had seen. So they established a new fund to help continue supporting uh students uh in the summer lab in Madison. And so this is just a reminder that we're happy to help any uh similar classes or similar uh efforts. If you want to do things here in Madison, uh we would love to to have you uh here and show you what's going on uh in person. So if you want, please reach out to Mike or to myself, uh or have classmates uh contact us at any time. Some additional undergraduate news. Uh we've been talking a lot about this for a long time, uh but the first group of students got to use the John C. Kedemeyer uh laboratories this summer for summer lab, and I think it went off uh flawlessly. They were very happy, uh plenty of space, got to spread out, do all sorts of fun new experiments and start operating the distillation column for the absolute first time. And so if you wanna get a a personal tour, if you haven't seen the space uh in person, um yeah, Avery Richardson was kind enough. She actually was one of the students who helped build the distillation uh tower uh in the new labs. Uh she gave a a nice uh walkthrough uh tour for everybody, and it's uh located in our YouTube channel. And so uh this will all, this town hall will also be recorded and put onto that uh same YouTube channel if you wanna watch this uh later on. And if you can't find it, please let us know. We'll we'll send you a link directly. So moving from undergraduate to graduate students, uh this is the second year in a row that the department's gotten to announce that we've had the largest class ever of graduate students. And so this is fantastic. This class included three uh National Science Graduate Research Fellows. So these are the prestigious three-year fellowship that students uh receive from NSF to pursue, you know, s- uh studies of their own uh choosing. And so uh these three uh folks were were helped uh again to recruited to the department with uh generous funds from the the Conway family uh who helped uh provide resources for us to increase the stipends and and um uh help recruit them uh to Madison specifically to to use their NSF uh fellowships. And also note that uh over forty percent of this year's class are female uh graduate students. And so this is something that's continued to to help uh to bring gender balance uh into the department and our uh graduate program. One other big thing that happened this fall, and I happen to be part of this as well, um before becoming chair, my prior uh administrative assignment was to help the department through the reaccreditation process. And so uh Thatcher Root, uh Stilianni, Stilianni Avroamidu, uh Brendan Blackwell, uh and I all helped compile what turned out to be a three hundred page self-study of our undergraduate program. And so for those of you who haven't uh been a part of A B E T, uh this is a uh conglomerate of different uh organizations, A I C H E being the chemical engineering one that helps uh accredit different engineering programs um in a structured process. And so uh the other departments in the college also uh put their programs through the same accreditation process on the same day. And so the visit, the examiners uh came to COE in in mid-October, and they were here from Sunday to Tuesday. On Sunday afternoon, we toured uh facilities with them, showing off the Kedemeyer facilities uh that had just been uh reconstructed um as well as then having the P E Vs meet with students, faculty, they got to observe some courses. Uh and then we got to answer any of the questions that they had about uh our self-study. So the nice thing coming out of that uh was we got to highlight all the cool things we're doing in the undergraduate program. Um and our P E V uh gave us a clean bill of health for the next uh six years. Uh and she also uh suggested a program strength. This is not something that's required uh in the evaluation. But that strength I wanted to highlight because it talks about the generosity of the alumni and how we were able to leverage that to redo all of the instructional laboratories. She thought that was truly amazing and a unique thing that she had doesn't see in every uh institution that she goes and tours. So we're done for six years, but not really. So Stilianni is now going to be um taking charge of collecting all the data that has to go into these self-studies. And so every semester we collect information about the courses, about the outcomes and our students meeting the objectives uh that we're setting forward. She's gonna compile different types of um uh peer groups that that come together and give us their own uh feedback. Uh and so those are things that we're we're really excited to keep going because they they are the seeds for how we continuously uh improve our program. So getting back to the jackhammering that I I still hear outside all that they could finally just stop for a few minutes. Um we're uh in the the middle of a construction zone. So these photos here, uh if you remember the building, this is Engineering Hall. Um the uh, I'm sure if you can even see my pointer here, but I'm pointing to my uh the Department Chair's office right over here in the corner. And this nice pile driver is uh putting stakes into the ground so that they can build uh new utility tunnels. And so the utilities here are decades old. Uh we've had some additional problems in other parts of the engineering campus with broken water mains and flooding uh that's resulted. And so it's time for upgrading all of the infrastructure, and that unfortunately is a very, very large project. But what it's also gonna enable us to do is get ready for the new Philip A. Levy Engineering Center. And so we've been talking about the new building for a long time. Uh this September, the lead gift was signed uh by the Levy Brothers. Uh and so this is uh from Marvin and Jeff, uh who are shown here uh in the lower left corner uh with Chancellor Manukin. Uh we had a nice uh event on September eleventh uh where that signing ceremony uh was held, and uh they are donating the funds to be the lead gift for the building in honor of their brother Philip A. Levy uh who had passed away a few years ago. And so I'm happy to report that yesterday, the Board of Regents authorized uh the start of construction. So that means that if I go backwards, um the building that's uh across the street here from Engineering Hall, the the old fourteen-ten building uh will now be able to start being demolished. Uh and then we can start to see hopefully in the next three to four years uh the rise of this new uh Philip A. Levy uh Engineering Center. We have one last hurdle, and that's the State Building Commission, and that's supposed to be cleared uh sometime next week. So hopefully we'll see this uh progress uh in the very near future. So that's the end of my report. Uh what I'd like to do now is transition over uh to Mai. Uh so just to give a little bit of background, uh Mai's a trained chemical engineer from Virginia Tech and then went and did her uh PhD at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign uh with Brendan Harley. Uh and so she knows the Midwest, is very familiar with that, and decided after her PhD to go to Boston, and she worked with uh Chris Chen uh at at Boston University uh where she was an NIH sponsored postdoctoral fellow. Uh and so she's doing an amazing job helping to bring a new techniques uh into the the biomedical uh side of the department. And I'll let her explain uh all that in particular. So Mai, do you wanna take over uh this this screen here?
Thanks for the introduction. Do you see? Do you see slides?
Yes.
We we do.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Alright, um yeah, so thanks, Brian, for the introduction. Um my name is Mingo, and I am the newest assistant professor in the department. And so I would like to take take a few minutes now just to tell you a little bit about myself and um what the lab has been up to for the past few months. Um so as Brian mentioned, I am trained and educated as a chemical engineer. I got my bachelor's degree from Virginia Tech. And then afterwards went to University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign for graduate school, and then most recently was at Boston University um for my postdoctoral training. Um outside of, you know, doing research and and teaching, I have other interests. And so I'm a rock climber, and so you can usually find me at the rock climbing gym in Madison. And then I really enjoyed that Wisconsin is a athletic school. And so I've been to a couple football games, I think a hockey game, and I have a basketball game lined up for January. Um other than that, I really enjoy going to concerts and just trying new food and and new baking projects at home. And so trying to kind of live a well-balanced life amongst the craziness that is being an assistant professor. Um and so one of the fun things about this semester is that we've been able to bring personnel into the lab. And so ever since September, I've been able to work with three really amazing undergraduate students who unpacked boxes and set up the lab space for me, and then even started some projects to build some of the first experimental platforms that the lab will use. And so I'll talk about this a little bit later. And then in October, um officially welcomed the first two graduate students for the No Lab, and so Sarah and Christine. Um and so Sarah is coming to us from Georgia Tech and Christine from N C State. And so excited to work with them starting in the spring semester once they finish their um first semester graduate course load. And so I characterize myself primarily as a tissue engineer. And so I am interested in building these three-dimensional materials that can start to look like the human, the tissues that are found in the human body. And in particular, I'm really interested in the blood vessels that form in these tissues and how those blood vessels contribute to the formation and the function of our human tissues. And I see that, you know, these platforms can be used for applications that span both biological fundamental science as well as more applied therapeutic uh or regenerative medicine applications. And so in order to kind of develop and use these materials, my lab really focuses primarily on technology development that we then apply to answer questions in fundamental science or to explore areas that might be of interest for biotechnology. And so within thinking about the technologies that my lab will develop, we are primarily, of course, interested in developing methods to form these three-dimensional tissue models pooling from biomaterials, microfabrication approaches, um very classic tissue engineering tools. But in conjunction with these tissue engineering tools, we're really interesting in bringing in some more modern tools from cell engineering and synthetic biology. And the reason that we're interested in doing so is because we want to really study how these different cell types are talking to each other within these tissues. And in doing so, perhaps being able to control the communication between different cell types to better instruct how these tissues form and function. And so once we've developed these kind of engineered tissue platforms that we can use in the lab, we can start to answer some fundamental questions in biology. And so we're really interested in how tissues develop initially. Um after injury, how do these tissues repair or regenerate themselves? And then when things go wrong, how do these tissues become diseased and how does that disease progress? And in graduate school, I really focused on this idea of the tissue microenvironment. So the idea that our tissues are made of material, our extracellular matrix, but also many, many different cell types. And so how does this microenvironment kind of influence and direct how a tissue forms and functions and dysfunctions? And then ultimately, I started, want to start thinking about how all of our tissues are connected together in the human body. And so we know that our circulatory system connects our different tissues and are sending signals between different tissues. And so can we start to model that using some of our different tools in order to start to look at things like metabolic disease or systemic disease? And then if we think more applied, um how can we start to think of these engineered tissues not only as models, but as platforms that could potentially be used for for new human therapies? And so thinking, for example, about cell therapies, which are really going through quite a revolution right now with engineered uh immuno-cell therapies for cancer, um also new gene therapies that have been approved for sickle cell disease. How can we kind of harness these therapies and expand upon these therapies to treat a variety of different conditions? And the other arm that I like to think about in terms of application is how we can potentially use our tissue models for toxicology screening. And so how can these be used perhaps by pharmaceutical companies in order to test new drugs to see if they'll be effective in humans? Um but also maybe even to start thinking about the effects of environmental contaminants and other kind of chemical risks and how that might also in- impact human health. And so of course, these concepts can really be applied across any type of tissue and any type of disease that we might be thinking about. Um but based on my training, I'm really interested in the brain. And so um diseases in the brain and how the brain perhaps even repairs itself um after after something like a stroke. And so the approach that we take in order to kind of answer the, answer these questions is a combination of tissue engineering, cell engineering, and uh fundamental biology tools. And so using these tissue engineering biomaterials and microfabrication techniques to actually build our tissue model incorporating in engineered cells so that we can control how these cells are signaling and talking to each other. And then finally, characterizing and understanding what is going on in our tissues using a lot of classic tools taken from um cell and molecular biology. And in terms of what I'm specifically interested in, I think it would be helpful to kind of give a brief background of what I did in my graduate work and my postdoc. And so uh in my graduate work with Brendan Harley, I was really interested in developing these vascularized tissue models in order to study how brain cancer progresses. And so the image that you see here is from one of these hydrogels that I develop in the lab. And the big ball of red in the middle is a mass of tumor cells, and the green that you see is blood vessels that have formed in the hydrogel. And so using this platform, we can really start to ask questions about how the blood vessels influence the way that the tumor cells invade through the hydrogel, um how they might proliferate and grow, and how they even might respond to therapy. And this can give us insights into how brain cancer might actually progress inside the human body. And then in my postdoctoral work, I was really interested in kind of going back fundamentally to understanding how we can build better uh blood vessels within these engineered tissue platforms. And the reason being is that while we have a lot of technologies right now that allow us to kind of grow these structures that look like blood vessels, they aren't necessarily functional. And so if we try to implant many of these biomaterials in the human body, they don't actually allow for blood circulation um to occur through the tissue. And so I started working in my postdoc again with this kind of merging of tissue engineering and synthetic biology tools. And so I engineered cells so that we could control the production of these different signaling cues in a dose-dependent manner. And then I combined them with microfluidic devices in order to determine whether we could kind of control the cell signaling output to better tune the amount of vessels that form and whether these vessels become functional or not. And indeed, what we were able to see is that if we use a small molecule to control how much signal or protein that our engineered cells are producing, we can indeed to tune the amount of vessels that form in our biomaterials. And we can also ensure that these vessels are able to become perfused by using our microfluidic technologies. And so then moving forward, what is my lab going to tackle in the next few years? And so the first research theme is still fundamentally thinking about how do we engineer blood vessels and lymphatic vessels inside the human body and really focusing again on developing biomaterials that not just only support the initial kind of organization into a blood vessel structure, but really making sure that these blood vessels are ult- ultimately functional if we want to um use them for some sort of therapy. And so I'm interested in using these microfluidic tools that I've developed to study biomaterial properties to understand which ones allow vessels to really become functional and perfused. On the other side of things, I'm also interested in this uh in lymphatic vessels. And so our circulatory system contains both blood vessels and lymphatic vessels. Blood vessels transport our blood through the body. Lymphatic vessels are responsible for draining away waste and fluid from your tissues. And so we're interested in strategies to build lymphatic vessels within our biomaterials um by merging both cell engineering tools as well as also optimizing biomaterial properties to again allow for the formation of functional lymphatic vessels. And to support this research theme, two of the undergrads, Jacob and Nathan, have been working really hard this semester to develop prototypes for these microfluidic devices that we will use um by using resources that are available here on campus. And so they've designed the models using SolidWorks, and then they go across the street to Went Commons to print these on the three D printers that are available in the Design Innovation Lab. And then within the lab space here in Engineering Hall, I've showed them recently how to, you know, actually develop microfluidic models or microfluidic devices from their molds. And then very recently, before Thanksgiving, we were able to put an engineered tissue into these different devices and use microscopy to show that we are able to form channels which can stimulate or simulate or mimic blood vessels um within these different technologies. And so moving forward, this is really going to be a key platform that we continue to develop on and explore in the next few semesters. The second research theme that I'm really interested in it is continuing my work in studying cancer. And so in particular, we know that uh cancer metastasis is the leading cause of death for cancer patients. Um but unfortunately, the real bottleneck right now in trying to treat cancer is that we do not understand why metastasis occurs and how metastasis occurs. So I'm really interested in using some of our tissue engineered platforms to start to dissect and understand, okay, why does a metastasis form in the brain? And how does the brain microenvironment kind of suppress or promote tumor progression once these tumor cells have entered the brain tissue? And so one of the first things that we'll do is kind of again take those microfluidic devices that Jacob and Nathan have been developing and use them to develop models of a primary breast tumor and the brain. And we will use these devices in order to start to simulate some of the signals that a tumor cell might send to the brain in order to precondition the brain tissue to become metastatic. And then the other question becomes then, well, once these tumor cells enter the brain, what do they do and why do they decide to do what they do? And a really interesting observation is that cancer cells really like to reside at this interface between a blood vessel and the surrounding brain tissue. And so it really becomes, I think, a question of interfacial properties. And how does those do those properties influence tumor cell behavior? And so in order to start to develop a platform to study this, um the other undergrad in the lab, Matthew, has been working on this bilayer hydrogel platform. And so the one layer, which you can see with blue beads in these images, would simulate the surface of a blood vessel. And then the other layer developed with the purple beads in the these images would simulate the surrounding kind of brain tissue. And so our goal next semester is to put uh to put cancer cells in between these two different hydrogel layers and start to observe um what the cancer cells do as a function of the different mechanical properties of these two different hydrogels. And then the final theme of the lab that I'll talk about is um understanding and engineering uh regeneration in the brain. And so all of our functional tissues, tissues in the brain um are originally derived from these cells that are called neural stem cells. These neural stem cells can turn into the neurons that make up the nerves in our brain, but they can also turn into other cell types that also help to support brain health and function. And if we can understand how these stem cells behave and decide how to turn into these different cell types, this would really open up the doors to start to understand what happens in neurodevelopmental uh disorders and also maybe even to harness these neural stem cells as therapies to regenerate brain tissue after traumatic brain injuries or stroke. And so it's been shown that these neural stem cells seen in these images in red are often found next to blood vessels, um leading us to hypothesize that there's something interesting about this blood vessel microenvironment that might be kind of informing neural stem cell behavior. And so to study this question, we're really interested in again seeing if we can use our engineered tissues not only as models, but as implantable therapies that can eventually be put into the brain after a stroke or a traumatic brain injury in order to support neural stem cell kind of transformation into functional brain tissue. And so the way that we hope to tackle this is by engineering kind of the vessel cells in our their the vessel cells in our their tissue therapies so that they could provide appropriate signals at the right time in order to control neural stem be- stem cell behavior. Um but also designing biomaterials that are influenced by the tissue that surrounds blood vessels as additional instructive cues for these neural stem cells. And finally, I'll also mention that in addition to thinking about um I guess neural regeneration, we also want to think about neurodevelopment. And so in this sense, we're thinking about ways to vascularize um these models called brain organoids. And so these are essentially clumps of stem cells that can start to form into very primitive brain like tissue that we can study in the lab. And so we are thinking about ways that we can kind of add blood vessels to these models so that we could start to perform applications such as toxicology, toxicology screening. And so again, understanding how different chemicals or environmental contaminants might influence brain development during pregnancy. And overall, thinking about using these platforms to study both neurodevelopment as well as neurodegenerative diseases such as um Alzheimer's. And here I see a lot of really nice synergy with work being done by Eric Schuster and Sean Palacek's groups. Um and so looking forward to, of course, collaborating with them over the next few semesters. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions and feel free to take a look around the lab website and um keep up with everything that the students will be uh doing over the next few semesters.
Thanks Maya, that was amazing. We're we're so glad to have you uh join the department. It's gonna be uh an amazing couple of years here as you build up your group. So now we're gonna transition uh to the Q and A. Uh Mike, I think you're gonna uh moderate.
Yep, happy to do that. So we'll start with some of the questions that were submitted uh during the registration process. And then I see there's a few that have been dropped into the chat already, so we'll go to those next. Uh if anybody still has other questions, feel free to drop them in the chat there. Uh so the first question that came in uh from registrations was what curriculum changes are contemplated to meet new technical technological challenges in a changing world?
Yeah, so I I think there's a lot of things happening right now with with the the explosion of AI uh into our lives in every way. Uh the department's looking at its computational uh curriculum. So we teach, as many of you may know, a a course in MATLAB or um uh how to use computational tools in solving engineering problems. And Victor Zavala recently has also built a statistics course that uses a lot of modern um modeling techniques. And so we're looking at those two examples and other ways to help bring in AI and other uh better uh modern resources to the curriculum. And then seeing what, of course, we would have to remove if we wanted to add uh additional new content. That's always a challenge. Our program has the most credits. Uh our bachelor's degree requires the most credits of any major on campus. And so we can't just keep adding new things. We have to find ways to integrate it with the the current curriculum. So great question.
Excellent, thank you. Um what is these uh chemi enrollment increased by adding new lab facilities? Or I guess maybe what's the plan for that?
Yeah, no, I think it basically eliminates uh what was formerly a bottleneck. So uh in the old summer lab, the largest capacity we could teach was uh sixty four students in three twenty four every semester. Uh and so now that is has been removed completely. Uh and so we're just waiting now for uh the demand to to grow. Uh and so we've got about a hundred students uh enrolled in our our freshman class. Uh and so we're seeing that uh we had had a dip in enrollment over the last few few years and that's consistent across the country. Uh primarily with driven by, I think, the the growth of data science and and these computational um areas. So again, we're trying to look at ways to strengthen our programs offerings in those areas to convince a few more students to come back and get a traditional chemical engineering degree and still be able to access some of those exciting fun things. Um so no, I don't think there's really a capacity limit other than uh continuing to to grow in the faculty uh size so that we can provide the right offerings. And as the enrollment grows, um you know, offer multiple sections of courses uh that would otherwise be uh oversubscribed. So yeah, great question.
Excellent. Uh the next one's from the chat and it's a two parter, so I'll I'll give them to you one at a time to handle it. Uh so what has changed recently or do you anticipate changing in requirements for A B E T certification? Thinking particularly curriculum.
Sure. Yeah, so A B E T um one of the 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 pillars of A B E T is that the idea of continuous improvement. So the department um and the the undergraduate curriculum committee is responsible for collecting data, assessing how our student outcomes are being met or not met, and identifying ways in which we can um improve that process or or eliminate weaknesses. Uh and so A B E T follows the same process. And so they're constantly looking at ways to improve their own uh procedures. And so there are some requirements that are gonna be changing in the not too distant future. None of them are official yet, so I'm not sure I wanna comment on the specifics, but at the chairs meeting at A I C H E this fall, uh they were, the first drafts were presented. And so some of that is going to be maintaining um certain minima in terms of um classical chemical engineering topics. So making sure the programs aren't um eliminating things like kinetics or thermodynamics or control theory. The those are things that um I think are are uh not gonna be difficult for us to to uh maintain. So uh I don't think that's uh too big a deal.
Excellent. So the second part of that is how much flexibility or constraint does A B A B E T certification place on what you can offer students?
Uh we we um are very sharp in our ability to figure out how to navigate the A B E T process um while providing students with everything we think they need. And so um our offerings are way in excess of the minima required by A B E T. Um and a lot of the constraints that A B E T puts on us are actually, they make us think about our programs. And so we brought more safety uh instruction into some of our courses in response to things that happen at the A I C H E level. Uh and so I think it's it's been good. Um so I don't think there's much of a constraint um at all.
Excellent. Um any updates on space expectations for C B E department in new engineering building?
Yeah, so uh um as you all know, this has been a hot topic for a while. Uh we don't know who is gonna move into this new space. And so I think uh until another decision, and that's uh who will be replacing Ian Robertson as as dean. Uh until that decision's made, I don't think you're gonna see much progress there. We continue to lobby, uh we continue to uh make sure that um our uh the the value that we can bring to the building is in the minds of the dean, and I don't think that's uh been forgotten. So hopefully I'll have a better update for you on that topic uh in the spring.
Excellent. Uh another one from the chat, what are the hiring s- excuse me, hiring statistics for chemi graduates?
Yeah, so the bachelor's class did really well. I forget, Mike, do you remember that the actual number? But I think there may have been one or two students who hadn't found employment as of uh when the survey was collected. Uh so very, very high.
Yep. I think it was, yeah, it was three or four, I think. Um this one, I I believe is for my here. Uh what were key reasons that my decided to come to Wisconsin?
Yeah, I think there are a few reasons. Um the first is that I felt when I interviewed with the department that there was a lot of energy and kind of intellectualist excitement. I really like the fact that there are a lot of other young assistant professors right now who I think just bring a lot of enthusiasm to what they do. And of course, a lot of new ideas. And it's been great to really synergize and learn from them and work with them. Um the second is that within the department and across campus, there's just a lot of great resources for biomedical research. And so for me, really thinking about human health, it was a real bonus to have the medical school on campus. And so clinicians that I can collaborate with to really make sure that, you know, the technologies that we're developing in the lab actually have a meaning and a relevance for human health impact. Um and then finally, you know, I I really kind of like the collaborative and collegial environment that I think are found at a lot of the Midwest Big Ten schools. I like really enjoyed my time at Illinois where everyone was just very willing to help each other and collaborate with each other to push science forward. And I feel like Wisconsin has a very similar kind of attitude and mindset as well. And so kind of overall, I thought that Wisconsin was a very great fit for me, both professionally as well as in term of research interests.
Awesome. Well, we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Um going back to Brian, do we have a current fraction of UW undergraduates uh from C B E that go into industry versus graduate school?
Yeah, I don't I don't have the statistics for last uh last year's class off off top of my head, but it's typically about ten percent of the students go off to to graduate school or less. Right? So the majority of people are going on, and that's, I should say, sorry, for PhD um chemical engineering degrees. Uh there are other students who decide to go off for MBAs or law school, uh med school, but those numbers um I don't remember off the top of my head. So I I would say the vast majority of students are going into industries uh or business.
Excellent. Um and so does C B E have plans for visiting faculty roles for industry emerging topics? Like AI for healthcare, data science for R and D, and or machine learning for chemical engineers?
So so maybe I can uh ask for a little bit of clarification on that one, Mike. Um is this for faculty at other universities to come teach us about these things? Or are we looking for industrial uh professionals who wanna come teach us this?
Uh Sanjan, if you'd like to unmute, you can help clarify for Brian?
Yeah, sure. So Professor Brian, it goes more from industry professionals if uh there will be like for a semester or two or something of that sort.
Yeah, so I mean, we've always had um in honor of Olaf uh Haugen, um Ha- Haugen visitors. And so there's a program that we can bring in um high profile uh, you know, people who wanna spend up to a semester with us. And so uh we've talked about these things, but it's usually an ad hoc. So somebody who wants to do these things will approach me, approach the closest faculty member in their area, and then we can make those things happen. Um in terms of of other industry connections, I think we've done a lot of uh what we would call fireside chats. Um and so, you know, faculty who are sorry, uh professionals who come back to recruit um can help schedule times to meet with different student uh populations. And faculty will attend those as they can. I think there's certainly mechanisms for it, um and happy to to make new ones if if they're needed.
Sure.
Good to see you, Sanjan.
All right, those are uh those are all the questions that we've received so far. Oh, we have one more uh for my. Uh how does Dr. No see the role of generating tissues synthetically relating to generating tissues via stem stem cell differentiation?
Yeah, I think that the two technologies can be merged a little bit. Um so certainly stem cell differentiation similar to what Eric and Sean do, that'll allow us to get different cell types that would be present in the tissues. Um but then I think there's still a sense of how do we build those stem cells into a three dimensional architecture that starts to look like a tissue in the human body? And how do we get all of those different cell types to talk to each other appropriately so that they're kind of regulating tissue function and form appropriately? And so that's kind of where I see emerging of again, my tissue engineering background with the the abundant stem cell expertise on this campus is really moving from how do we not only just build and develop these cell types, but actually form them into some sort of three dimensional construct um that actually starts to function like a beating heart or fire up neurons like the brain um does. And so that's kind of kind of how I think about that that idea.
Very cool. Um those are all the questions that have been submitted. So I guess I do one last call. If anybody has a question, they could feel free to drop it in the chat or just unmute and feel free to ask Brian or mine. Uh otherwise, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Uh Brian, I have a I have a question. The you guys have done a great job pivoting out of you know, olefins into the world of bio and taking all the chemi processes, but applying them in a biological setting, whether that be fermentation or transport across the blood brain barrier, stem cells, the tissue work that my just talked about. Um is it, i- are we pivoting because that's where the world is going? Um and or or is it a strategy to say, you know what, we wanna be recognized as one or two best in the world that does this to attract more? Or is there a, boy, I don't wanna over concentrate in one area and I feel like there's two or three areas I'd like to build up. How do you how do you think about that strategically as a department? Um primarily on the research side, I guess, because on the undergraduate side, I think you've done a good job proving that the basics apply. It's just a matter of where you apply them and then where's the advanced research taken? So how how do you think about that question?
Yeah, I I thanks, John. It's a great question. Um you know, we're chemical and biological engineering. So you know, uh the biological engineering side says, hey, when we get to fifty fifty, then we'll be uh we'll be at the right mix. But that's just joking. Uh no, in all seriousness, um there's a lot of demand from students for this type of research. Uh I think the current generation um of both undergraduates and graduate students are more interested in the sustainability challenges, the healthcare challenges um and things that they've interacted with in their personal lives, right? So solving a family member's uh cancer or addressing infectious disease or making sure that we're not um you know, throwing so much plastic into the environment that it ends up in these islands in the ocean. And so demand for positions um is something that's hard to measure, right? Because you're trying to anticipate that six years from now, you know, uh is when my is gonna be going through the tenure process and, you know, we we have to project out, is this something that's gonna last for, you know, thirty years? And we need these these faculty on board. Um and so we don't necessarily, you know, measure it in any precise way. Uh but I think we sense this year with my and Quentin, who you saw at the the, somebody you saw at the last uh town hall. Uh this year, we had more um biotechnology students uh enroll in our graduate program. So people with stated biotech interests than we probably had in the last three years combined. And so one of the things that I think is is causing that is that we've brought in young talent and we've created a critical mass, not just in biotechnology, but now concentrated within tissue engineering, stem cell biology, within synthetic biology, within some of the other areas that students can easily see themselves uh staying. And so how do we grow from here? I think we're gonna continue to add chemical engineers. We're gonna continue to add biological engineers to the department. But in general, um it's probably somewhere in the, you know, two thirds, one third to three quarters, one quarter is probably how the department will be broken down uh going forward. Right. Anybody else has questions? Happy to take them. If not, I just wanna say thank you to all of you again. Uh it's been great to get to to know many of you. Uh my first four or so months here on the job have been eye opening to all of the different things that have to go on. Uh but I'm happy to report that we are are moving forward in in a great direction. I just left before this town hall, the faculty search meeting. And so we're getting excited about which of the four hundred uh applications that we receive, we want to interview. Uh so that's all gonna be taking place in January, February and March. And hopefully by next fall, we'll be able to add another new assistant professor or five uh to the ranks for you to to meet at upcoming town halls. So please keep your support coming in. We love you. Uh we love to hear from you and anything we can do, please just let us know. Have a great day on Wisconsin.